Do you all please rise and join into the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is the official regular meeting of Town Council, Monday, August 28th. I hope everybody enjoyed their summer, back to school, back to business as usual from here on in. All members of council that are currently seated are present, and Mr. Babrick is also present. We have on there, Mr. Babrick, we have the current member equity distribution check presentation. We did that last time, I'm assuming that was a holdover, correct?
Yes.
So that's no business. The consent calendar, I'm going to pull off the minutes from last meeting. There's a slight adjustment that needs to be made to those minutes, so we'll have a revised draft next time. But while we're at it, if there's any additional comments to those minutes, we can hear them now and incorporate those comments into the revised draft for review. All right, seeing none, other, I'm sorry.
Can you tell us what the numbers should be?
Yeah, there was some business that was discussed that was not reflected on the minutes. And the clerk brought that to my attention before this meeting, so I wanted to revise them, so. Other than that, are there any other additional comments to the consent calendar? My intention is to pass the consent calendar absent the minutes, absent objection. All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. Communications, we have A through L. I would just ask that those communications be incorporated into our minutes. We have public participation at this time. Ms. Lapelis, we will recognize you as the first public participant. Everybody knows who you are in the entire town of Monroe, but name and address for the record, please.
Enid Lapelis, 69 Ridgedale Road. So I'm stepping off the dais because I'm really just here as a person who happens to live on Ridgedale Road. When I went around last year, just walking around, I was floored by 93 Ridgedale Road is blighted, to my mind, to the worst. And I think there's some names here who will, you can come in as soon as I'm done saying what I'm gonna say. So I took pictures, I thought, I can show you the pictures, and I wrote on the back of each picture what it was. So nineteen, you may not know, 69 Ridgedale, then there's a curve, and eventually it comes out to leave the drive. So when I just went for a walk, I thought, I can't believe what was there. And then when I asked people who still live there, they said, yeah, it happens to be a divorce situation. Right now, the bank owns it, the mortgage is paid for, the mortgage is paid up to date, which means that, I spoke to Joseph Chaplin yesterday, today, zoning enforcement officer, he can't do anything about it because the mortgage, the taxes are paid up to date, which to me is a crime in itself. And his last comment here was, and you ought to see what else is in Monroe other than 93 Ridgedale Road, that they really, right this minute, can't do anything about. So let me just pass the pictures around. If you look in the back, this is down the driveway, and you gotta be careful, I can't go on the property when someone owns property. So I'm gonna stand back far enough to show you the driveway. And then, this is piles of cut-down trees. So you just take, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah, so you just take them, and I'll take them at the end. Here's more cut-down trees, the driveway was almost non-existent. Here's more cut-down trees, and then the end of the house, the brush is six to 10 feet high. It's a ranch, so when I say ranch, no, it must be just a regular colonial. And the brush goes up to 10 feet. And then, the view, there's a junk Volkswagen in the woods, and it's so covered by grass, it was very hard to see. And my husband said he'd go in to try to look, we were kind of afraid because we heard all these noises of animals, so he walked out real quick. So the front entrance of the house is totally obliterated, obliterated by weeds and tree growth. So just saying, I thought about, if I was on the council and something like this is occurring, I feel I should just come and make some comments. And then if the neighbors want to speak, then just come up one at a time, name, address, and you can speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lapelis.
Yeah, and I'll go back to my little house.
I'm in Ridgefield, I live at 94 Ridgedale Road, and I've been trying to do, I've been calling, emailing in pictures, nothing was done. Apparently, we don't have a blighted ordinance in Monroe. That's really discouraging, considering all the taxes that we pay in Monroe. And if you had to live at my house, where we live, and look at this every day, then it'd be a whole lot of difference. Everybody without, in this audience right now, it's disgusting. Now, not only is it blighted, it's, they've abandoned it, nobody even lives there. So the fact that Enid is saying that the mortgage is paid up to date and nothing can be done, that's just a travesty. That's a damn travesty.
Would anybody else like to participate publicly at this time? Just name and address for the record.
Sure. Greg Winters, 101 Ridgedale Road, I live next door to the property. You know, as was clearly said, it is in a disarray, or at least it appears to be. Haven't seen anybody come or go. There's a lot of issues with animals that, you know, is a concern for us, and, you know, it's a humongous eyesore. Something could be done, it would be really appreciated.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just name and address for the record, sir.
Hi, I'm Bob Murphy, at 24 Lima Drive. I live about a quarter of a block away from the property, and I go by just about every day. It's embarrassing, it's an eyesore. If I lived next door to that, or one of my friends lived, people, my neighbors, I'd be so upset about it. And it's a shame that we can't, Town of Monroe can't do anything about this. So I think, you know, Monroe should be able to help the neighbors to do something. See, the bank, it's up to date with the mortgage, and the bank owns it, as we say. Maybe we'll get after the bank to just maintain the property or something like that. But if any one of us lived next door to it, we'd be up in arms, and I guess that I feel for my neighbors. Thanks a lot, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? No, any subject is.
I didn't want to, if they wanted to speak, I could wait. Steve Kirsch, 35 Applegate Lane, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was at the Board of Finance meeting last week, and on their agenda was a number of bonding items. And they made the comment that they're not prepared to move forward until you all have taken action. And so that raises a couple of questions. Number one, I'd like to know why it isn't under your unfinished business, since it is sitting with you all for action. I think you put it to one of your committees a while ago. I was reading the minutes from your last meeting, and it was reported that Mrs. Lapelis had a conversation with the Chair of the Board of Finance, saying that regardless of what the state's doing, we still need to move forward. So, A, I'd like you to put it on your unfinished business, and B, I think we ought to move forward. Because even though we may or may not want to proceed to actually purchase these things, a lot of which, I think most people agree, are gonna be needed, there's no reason why you all can't agree to move it forward. The Board of Finance can move it forward, we can have a town meeting, we can have the multiple individual votes like you all discussed. And we still don't have to actually bond if, for some reason, the First Selectman and the Finance Director and whatnot think that it's not in our best interest. But given some of the things on the list, like two vehicles for DPW that are gonna be used as snowplows as well, I think we ought to at least move this along, rather than just sitting on it. So I'd like to see you all take some action and move it forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close our first public participation session. Moving on to appointments, we have two this evening. First is item A, Patrick Carlton, Democrat, 76 State Village Road, to the Town Council, to fill a vacancy created by Nick Kapoor, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carlton is currently serving as Deputy Director on the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, where he assists the Executive Director in implementing the overall council program, including short and long-term planning, policies and procedures, program development, local, state, and federal coordination. Mr. Carlton has also served council as a regional planner, in his previous experience as a grant writer for the city of Bridgeport. In addition to other community service, Mr. Carlton is the former Chairman of the Town of Monroe Board of Ethics, and I feel it brings valuable expertise and experience to the Town Council. As the Chairman stated, this fills a vacancy created by Mr. Kapoor.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Motion by Ms. Martin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hansberger. Ms. Martin did read the blurb to start the discussion. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add that because this is an appointment to Town Council, the requisite of Mr. Carlton being interviewed by LNA did take place prior to this meeting this evening. And there was amongst a lengthy discussion, there was a unanimous three to zero vote by LNA to have Town Council consider this appointment. Any further discussion?
Sure.
All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, and against, that motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Carlton, if you'd like to come forward and be sworn in by Mr. Babrick, he'd be happy to do so.
Are you ready? Are you willing to serve in the Town Council to the best of your abilities, so help the God?
Congratulations.
We have a seat for you.
Yeah, why not?
Patrick, we have a chair for you. And a seat.
Welcome, Patrick. While you're getting ready over there, we'll move on to item B, is the appointment of Susan Maurizio Cristiano. You, 79-year-old, coming to Monroe to EDC, Mr. Rooney?
I'll read this. Susan Maurizio Cristiano is a 13-year resident of Monroe. She is the founder of V Communications and Caseon Communications. Her marketing background will be instrumental in helping EDC business development efforts. Susan has over 25 years of public relations and marketing experience. She handles publicity, editorial placement, social media, and branding for all-size businesses. Her efforts reach not only consumer and trade publications, but TV, radio, web outlets, and celebrity endorsements, none of which are mine, by the way. Susan enjoys volunteering in the community, as well as the marketing lead for Monroe Works and Cultural Council. She's also a member of Stephanie PTO and volunteer at Trinity Baptist Church. This appointment will fill the vacancy left by Barbara Farr.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Babrick, for the description. I still need a motion for the appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kellogg, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Lapelis. Mr. Babrick, thank you for the description, assuming that's the start of our discussion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this appointment, and against, that motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to action items. A, Town Council on Finance, Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. Ms. Lapelis is the Chair of that subcommittee, Ms. Lapelis.
Yes, number one, for finance, the Board of Education, you know, they do their own insurance. They over, they went over almost people, they have a $150 cap for, in terms of insurance being self-insured. Seventeen people took over the $1 million. They have a reserve right this minute of $3,000, so that's never been heard from, for years. But it's just how it is, and of course, I'll get back the money next year, et cetera, et cetera. The Board of Finance is gonna meet with the Board of Ed and the insurance carrier to figure out what happened. But again, you can have one person. When I did the grievances, we had one woman who had a heart transplant, it was like a million and a half. And, you know, that's a lot of money coming out. In terms of the budget, we're just waiting for the state, or I say, the Board of Finances. They gave Monroe zero. On the other hand, I'm quoting, the Democrats gave Monroe 6.8 million, so we don't know what's happening here. Right this minute, the Board of Finance budget is $2 million in ECS, and it'll be 1.5 million with special ed unless it gets cut. So there's a meeting September 11th, it'll pass the House, they don't know what'll happen because the Senate is split. And again, I'm just quoting, so.
Who are you quoting?
I'm quoting Mr. Mangus. You know, just in terms of he, I always go to him.
I just wanted to know who you're quoting.
Yeah, 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 I always go to him because he knows the most about it. Going on to Park and Rec, they had a talk about how they're spending the field funds. They designed the new field, they spent more than they were supposed to. Now, it's a question of going back and seeing, you know, what they're gonna do about it. Planning and zoning, wanted money for the overflow parking, and it just so happens, the tennis courts came in under budget. So they were able to find $40,000 to do the overflow parking. And now they're up to, Frank Cooper also noticed that when the construction was done, there's a little pathway that wasn't done properly, so that's gonna be done very quickly. But there's enough money in LoSiP for all of this. They would like Park and Rec to get a better grasp on the funds and how it gets spent. But that just depends, you know, exactly what happens. They, let's see, the Board of Health did not meet in July, either did, I'm sorry, not the Board of Health. The Board of Education and the Commission on Aging did not meet in July. EMS met July 26th. It's actively working on RFP for the scheduled ambulance replacement. The police body cameras came in, they need the policy and training. They're interviewing candidates for the October seat, and the cameras will be in the public in October, October. And then Officer Wall, the hearing will be set for September 14th. That's what I have for Feps.
Thank you, Ms. Lapelis.
Could I just briefly have a clarification?
Sure.
For my notes. I'm assuming this information is from Mr. Mangus, as you said, in the ed. A million over insurance, or over a million?
Okay, you're right, over a million dollars was spent on the reserve. The reserve is now down to $3,000.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yes, because if you take 150,000 times 17, you come to over a million dollars.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Just to add to your report, the House Republican budget was recommending flat education funding to Monroe over last.
Yeah, we run the government too well here, so.
Moving on to B, is the Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Matters. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we're looking for guidance on this one. I'm gonna start with the interlocal agreement for solid work. This is Mr. Malaki's push, he's gonna try to get done for next year. So I'm basically looking for giving him guidance on how he should proceed. I know that we had a consensus a couple of meetings ago, but he's asking again, what's the best route? He has presented the actual interlocal draft, which is almost letter for letter what the recyclable one was. From what I understand, the position and conditions of it are very similar. Should he come to council, should he go to LNA?
I will refer to LNA if your committee has done its two pitches.
We have, we have.
Then I would be happy to refer that to Mr. O'Rourke.
I will let him know that, so he'll be coming your way soon, Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you.
Okay, so Parks and Rec. The department is removing all program equipment up on the second floor in Chalk Hill, as recommended by the SPC. Also, they've negotiated a rental price for the use of St. Jude for fall and winter programming, as recommended by SPC. So there's some big news there. Seasonal program brochure is gonna be in development, so it's just gonna be in the homes by the end of September. So a lot of good stuff there. There's a Labor Day Patron Appreciation Day to end the season, Special Activities Plan, look out for that. I'll have, I think he's been advertising for it on various outlets. Also, Melissa O'Roses is the new Recreation Program Supervisor, replaced Pat Quinn, who resigned his position to pursue other options. So Melissa comes to us, and they're very excited about that. One other update I would like to provide on EDC, they do have a new Chair. So Donna Verdisco is their new Chair, and Restaurant Week is scheduled for October 13th through the 20th. This is the first year they're doing it, so. I know the EDC is gonna be marketing that quite heavily, and we should definitely be advertising that ourselves around town, strongly suggest everybody to attend it. So again, that's October 13th through the 20th. October 13th through the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
That's it.
Moving on to C, is the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. That's Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We vetted and took into consideration Patrick Carlton to be appointed to Town Council. And we also addressed a building permit for 304 Fairmount Drive, which we voted to approve to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Moving on to item D, is the Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee has not met since the last Town Council meeting. Now that we have a little bit more leeway with vacations ending up, we will be scheduling another meeting. We have a couple of items that are still out there, referred from the council, one being a Municipal Space Needs Assessment, RFP, which we'd like to move forward. So we'll be scheduling a meeting in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Item E is the EMS Facility Work Group. As I mentioned in our prior meeting, this is going to be, has fulfilled its obligation as a work group. It'll be replaced by the EMS Building Committee. The resolution for that committee will be presented and to LNA subsequent to this meeting, and will be considered by LNA for hopefully Town Council review and approval at our next meeting. So moving on to. First election's update, Mr. Babrick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as has been said a couple times, there is no budget in state. The Democrats just brought out their budget, it does give us back some of the money. Republicans, as I said, holds us harmless. Right now, the Governor has, they're getting together on September 11th. Some people think it'll be done by the 14th. A lot of people, including the Governor and the House Leader, think it's not gonna get done until October, November. Obviously, we still have a spending freeze on, so, you know, I would caution anybody to think about spending any kind of money right now until the actual budget numbers come out. There's some things that you see a transfer tonight, I'm surprised that even went through, but there are some things needed that we have to get through, so I appreciate your support on that. Sadly, Rich Lasky, our Assessor, has resigned. He will be leaving effectively September 9th for a position in Portland.
Go back to Portland, that's where he was originally.
Go back to Portland. They actually are giving him more money, we've heard that before. I've been meeting with John Batista on potential situations for the budget, but again, none of us are panicking because we don't know what the numbers are gonna be. There's, we're having some good conversations on different things. He's very, very aggressive, as some of you might know. We start monthly meetings, which I hope my, the First Selectman, whoever it is after me, continues with the Board of Education once a month to sit down and listen to the community. John is distinctly different than any other superintendent we've had, in a good way. He's listening more, he knows what has to be done in his budget, and I commend him for what he's been doing, just sitting down and talking. Let's see, the only thing I have, I just mentioned John Batista thing, no budget. The Rich Lasky thing is something that, right now, I would probably be naming an acting person, somebody in the office. As you know, Catherine is still out, her assistant is out, and acting there now is doing a very good job in basically filling his shoes when he has to go and do things he has to do. So it's gonna be, hopefully, a very seamless transition. And I just caution, and I've heard both candidates say it, I don't wanna make a political thing, but we've gotta start treating our staff better. I know, even in a difficult budget situation, our staff is our family and people who need to work with us. So that's just my little pitch for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babrick. Moving on to unfinished business. A, Chalk Hill updates, as I indicated, until we have a permanent plan with Chalk Hill, I'm gonna leave that on the agenda. It's as stable as it can be right now pursuant to SPC's plan, which I believe, if I'm correctly wrong, has been enacted by DPW at this point. So anything further on Chalk Hill? Okay, moving on to B, FIRE Study Status Report. I believe Mr. Kellogg is the liaison there, so if you have an update for us, Mr. Kellogg, I'd be happy to hear it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The group did meet, and RFP was published by the town on August 3rd. We anticipate that another meeting on September, I believe it's September 6th, to address any questions that come in. I have been advised that we have gotten a response from several interested parties, so that's a good thing. The more, obviously, the more competitive it'll be. The bids are due on September 29th, so we will have a, I'm assuming the Chair will, of that group, will call a meeting soon thereafter to go through them after the bid opening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hansberger.
Just a question, when is the bid opening on? I presume the bids will be opened on 9/29, since that's when they're due. So I'm saying there'll probably be a meeting to open the bids, but I anticipate there will not be a lot of discussion at that meeting, since it'll be the first time anyone's seen me. But obviously, we got up to the Chair of the committee.
Anything further?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Moving on to our new business this evening. A is the Parks and Recreation Bench Donation from D, Ms. Lapelis.
I made a motion to accept $1,541 donation from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection CARES Program, Aquatic Education, for a bench in memory of Dick Emmons.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg. Is there any discussion? Obviously, the town very much appreciates any donation it receives to better our community.
I would just say, I went for walking the trail, I haven't been there in years because I go to the gym, and there's many benches with people's names, I was very impressed. And it was nice if you wanted to rest, or if you're walking a dog, you could just sit and look at that. I was real impressed, and the gravel looked a lot better than it had the last time I walked, so benches were nice.
We actually have a lot more coming in, unfortunately, as you walk along the path, there's a few things that have to be built up again. But there's a lot of, been a lot of, a lot of people want to put benches here, so it's gonna be even better.
Anything further? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, and against, that motion carries nine to zero. Moving on to B, is the Resolution Regarding the Hills of Monroe Building Permit. Ms. Lapelis.
I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporate it into the body of the resolution. Be it resolved, whereas the Town Council for the Town of Monroe has been apprised of the following factual situation. The Hills of Monroe Condominium Association, HOM, has applied for a building permit for the Town of Monroe to restore the sheet rock fire rating in the storage area at its building located at 304 Fairmount Drive, which is required by Fire Code NFPA 101 4.6.12. And whereas the Town of Monroe Building Official in processing the application had determined from the Monroe Tax Collector that one of the individual units located within the afford said building at HOM is delinquent in the payment of real estate taxes. And whereas the Monroe Tax Collector by state statute cannot sign the permit since all the units at HOM are not up to date on the payment of their taxes. And whereas there is a possible safety and/or health situation which exists at HOM. And whereas the First Selectman pursuant to Section 7-148 (7) (H) (XI) is empowered to do those acts necessary to provide for the health of the inhabitants of the municipality, and to do all things necessary, desirable, to secure and promote the public health. And therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Monroe Town Council, as legislative body of the Town of Monroe, hereby authorizes the First Selectman in carrying out his powers and responsibilities under Section 7-148 (7) (H) (XI) to sound off on the pending building permit for the HOM as dated this 28th day of August 2017 at the Monroe, Connecticut, Monroe Town Council. Francis Lido, Chairman.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis. Is there, before, I just wanted to clarify that at last, "as" should be stricken, so the resolution that I have will end after "HOM." Much less, Pal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion, as Mr. O'Rourke pointed out, this was reviewed by LNA unanimously approved three to zero. As some members of council may recall, we had done this in the past for Hills of Monroe. It presents a difficult situation, conundrum for the town, in that Mr. Camera cannot sign off on building permits in condominium associations when there is an individual unit owner who's behind in taxes. But Mr. Davenport did prepare a memo that is part of our packet that does indicate that, in his professional opinion, that this was a health and safety, life safety issue, and as a result, that permit was properly issued, and this resolution is seeking to ratify the issuance of that permit with our legislative. with our legislative authority overriding the requirement of Mr. Canberra to share all the taxes we're taking. So any further discussion?
I can't thank you enough for your quick action on this because it was a terrible quickly.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And against, the motion carries. And our last item of business is C, the Transfer of Funds Resolution for Engineering, Planning, and Zoning Enforcement Fuel Expenditures, Mr. Kellogg.
I make a motion to approve the Engineering and Planning and Zoning Enforcement Budget Transfers for fiscal year two thousand eighteen for fuel expenditures, budgeted, and other line items. Pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section seven F of the Town Charter, which states when an office shall desire to secure a transfer of funds set apart for one specific purpose to another, the First Selectman may make application to the council, which may approve the transfer. Accordingly, please place the following resolution for the transfer of funds within the Engineering and Planning and Zoning Department on Town Council's agenda for Monday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. So engineering operating expense from three hundred dollars to the engineering fuel, veal, and equipment expense of three hundred dollars. And then the fuel, planning, and zoning enforced veal expense from four hundred to planning and zoning fuel, vehicle, and equipment expense of four hundred.
Motion by Ms. LaPelleas, is there a second? Second by Mr. O'Rourke. Self-explanatory, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. That motion carries nine to zero. That concludes our business for this evening, second public participation. Anyone who'd like to participate in the second round of public participation? All right, seeing none, I'll close, second public participation, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Hansberger, second by Ms. LaPelleas, all those in favor. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much.